I call this workshop to the Bryan Independent School District Order. Let the record show the CORMA board members is present. This workshop has been duly called and that notices this workshop has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I'm going to go out on a limb here and say there's no citizen comments considering there's no citizens here.
Oh, citizens.
So, we are here for-
None of y'all are citizens.
Yeah. They have their own opportunity to make all kinds of comments coming up, but we are here for the Team of Eight training that is an annual required training for school boards. And we do have a, one action item, I think on the agenda that is on here, and that is, considering the approval of purchase requests over 50,000 for Pacific Northwest Publishing and Professional Development, I went ahead and told them if it's time pressing, which this is, to try to get it in, that we could go ahead and put it on this agenda and get it approved.
Good evening, thank you. Just circling back from our meeting on Monday night to see if there are any questions that we could answer for you, the team presented on Monday. We had an after meeting and went over a few more things, but if there's anything that we could answer for you in regards to this partnership, be more than happy to do so.
I move approval of the purchase authorization for Pacific Northwest Publishing, Inc., Professional Development not to exceed 485,000 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Dwayne, a second by Ms. Benford. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And then we will move on down into the Team of Eight. I will say that we're going to open this and do some of the basic discussion out here and just for the videotaping of this, but as we start to move into some of the more specific student data and specific student data measurements, we will be going into closed session for the actual show and tell. Just to kind of get us started here, and I'll allow the presenters to introduce themselves here in a minute, but this was a follow-up kind of request when we brought in the new data analytics. And part of that request, I've heard from numerous board members, was not just this idea of an elusive dashboard, but how can we leverage it to make sure, Forecast Five is a specific software package, but how can we leverage it to make sure that we have the data points that we need? And can we get training on it so that we know what's there in a large sense? And we're, and so we don't go out and ask for data that we assume is there and it may not be there, and you know, we certainly want to keep it in perspective. Now, with that being the overall kind of goal here, I did invite Tazby in to be here and Orin, who serves quite frequently as our Team of Eight training, to be the, kind of the referee here and keep us on track for what is board information? Where might we be trying to overreach? Where might we be trying to go a little bit deeper than we need from a governance standpoint? And so, you know, when I sit here and I was putting together a kind of presentation that spent most of the day kind of thinking through this, and I also go back to Monday's meeting and Mr. Stasny made a point about narratives, making sure that we don't just look at the data, and we don't just analyze data, but we have the narratives. And there's a couple of things that came up, but one thing that came up to me real quick, and this is, I don't attempt humor very often, but the first thing I thought about was when I go to the doctor and I'm sitting in Dr. Deckerian's office and she comes in and says, "How do you feel?" "I'm great, I'm awesome, tremendous." And then she says, "Okay, go step on the scale, I'm going to take your blood pressure, and then we're going to look at your lab results. We're going to see how well that narrative really matches up to what's going on underneath." Versus the emergency room where you go in and you want to tell the doctor for two hours what exactly happened to you throughout the day for them to pull up the x-ray and say, "Yep, you broke your arm." I mean, you know, sometimes the data is just obvious, but sometimes that narrative is also important because as I was going down and looking through a lot of the different data, and I'll spoil alert, I pulled a lot of the snapshots for the past six years because they're public data, you know, we can look at and talk about, share snapshots. But if you look specifically at the SAT score and you compare last year's score to six years ago, there's about a 400-point drop. And your first inclination is, wow, did we really go down that far? No, the SAT changed their scoring mechanism in the middle there. So we've actually started to go up, so sometimes that data can be very misleading without the narrative. But, so, before I turn it over, I just wanted to kind of make that saying, and we recognize that the narratives and data measurements are not interchangeable when discussing the key areas, but we also understand that the narrative is important for understanding the context to the data measurements. And so with that in mind, really what we're here to talk about for the remainder of the time is really what is the data points that we can glean? What would we like to see as a board? And with that, as we start to look at data, and I'm going to be real quick to pull us back, we're not here to solve a problem. We're not here to probably identify a problem, right? We're here to identify maybe data points that we want to dig down deeper into to see if there is a problem, but I guarantee you, there is always problems to solve and we can spend all of our time trying to figure out why one line is going down versus up. And that's really, so, so really, you know, staying focused on that data, what does that dashboard look like? The other thing that, a couple of other small just housekeeping items here, is really education forever and data points are always lag measures. The board always deals with lag measures. Let's be realistic, we don't move very fast. We only meet twice a month in most cases, unless it's this week. Okay? But for the most part, we're dealing with those, that lag data, and as a former teacher, probably the best way that I can think about lag data is a six-week report card. When you get your six-week report card, it's too late to do anything about that six weeks. You're already past it, it's already there. Same thing with our year-end scores and everything else that we get that we use to measure our school health, you know, they're lagging behind actually being able, they're telling you where we were in that snapshot. Mr. Beesaw is pretty familiar with this because, you know, we just got our annual financial report from last year that looked, and I'm exaggerating here, that looked at the previous year's number, yeah, and it didn't, but you know, it's, we're already working on next year's budget, dealing with this year's budget, and getting audited on a prior year's budget. And so, it's easy to look there, and I think if we start with that financial piece first, it's easy to look at, how do we know that we have the right information to make that decision? We just approved spending a lot of money that's very important. You know, how do we know where that impact is? And when we have to make the next decision, how do we know, how do we keep track of what was presented prior so that we know that we're not going far, so we're seeing it in real time and not a year later with the impact? And so, financial is easy with the leads, and I'll be very honest with you as well, I think in Dr. Barrow's world, you know, leads versus lags are very challenging, and even looking at some of this data in general is very challenging. But my hope and my goal is to get down to what are some common denominators? I'll go back to my doctor visit. It took me forever because I hate getting on the scale at my doctor's office because I can weigh myself at home, get in the car, drive to the doctor's office, and I'm five pounds heavier. I don't know what happened during that drive, but I'm five pounds heavier at the doctor's office. It took my wife a lot of, a lot of me griping and finally her saying, you know, she doesn't care what you weigh. She cares what you weighed last time versus this time. She cares about the trend. Yeah, which I thought was really hilarious coming from my wife, who is in the medical profession considering that she hasn't gotten on a doctor's scale in about 10 years. But, you know, it's that, I think as we get down into the finer points of the data, it's how can we find that consistent data that can show us that trend? You know, what is that consistent data? You know, and because even the snapshot data changes measurements from year to year to year. So what's our district key focus? And how can we, how can we use that data to gauge how healthy our district is? Right? What's the health of our district? Not just the academic success, but what's the overall health of our district? That's what I'd like to see ultimately on the dashboard, is everybody, you know, from the different committees and the different perspectives can look there and say, "I feel comfortable. I feel comfortable that we're on the right trajectory, we're in the right direction, we're measuring and we're looking at the right things." So that's where I'll stop and I'll open it up. This is kind of, yes, they're going to present and talk, but they have specific stuff, but they're here to also hear from us what we're kind of looking for and, you know, what would be an ideal scenario, I think.
I just really want to know what the system is going to be able to do so that we know how to frame our questions in, you know, in the meetings and when we're looking at things, not having a full understanding of what data points are going to be available. We want to make sure that when we're purchasing things or making decisions that the data points, we're using the right ones and not asking you to do something that this can't do. So I think for me, getting just an overview of what the capabilities are, how it's going to work, and kind of how to extrapolate that data so that we're making informed decisions and not creating lots and lots of work on the back end of stuff that hasn't been put in or can't be put in.
Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and address that if you'd like. So, Lynn Braswell, I am with Frontline Education, and we work with Forecast Five Analytics, who is now part of Frontline Education. I spent the last 20 years in public education and now serve as an advisor, and this has become, I am actually your advisor for both the financial side and the student side. So we'll be working in two different data sets. One of our products is called comparative analytics and the other one is student analytics. The student analytics is what we've been building with your team. Comparative analytics is already built, it's pulled off of public data, it's downloaded from those other decision points. When we are working in the student analytic data, your team is amazing, by the way. Just so that you know, top-notch, I work with a lot of clients across the country, they do a great job, because it is a lot of work on the front end to make the first lift, and that is because we're stripping everything from the student information system that we can possibly put together to actually make analytics come together, you know? In a student information system, it's not really designed for analytics. It's basic reporting, it's turning in your PMS, getting it to the state. We are data-rich in Texas, but analytic-poor. And so we have had all of these wonderful things that we've put together for, as a state, TSDS, our Texas Data Standards, we have said, "This is how we're going to report these things, this is what we expect." So we are pulling in your attendance data, your grades, your discipline, we're pulling in student demographic data, we're pulling in the things that move into your student information system. There are also some things that are also local builds. So when we think about it, let's say you have a program, Gear Up, so that program's going in, that's an indicator code. If you do add it, that's an indicator code. Those are local decisions that you've made, but we're actually going to help you with your analytics side of it to see, is that program moving our students? The other piece that we're looking at is all of your assessment data. We're going to pull in each one of those assessments that we find value in, and we talk about that value-add assessment because a lot of times, you know, we keep giving the same assessment just because, well, we've always done it, so we're just going to keep giving that assessment. And so we pull in those value-add assessments and then we cross them over. So most of the time when you see star, and the argument that we've had around star, year after year is, it's one day, it's one snapshot, it's one moment. Great, we're going to put star and we're going to put it next to your NWA map, and then we're going to have that conversation so that we can have a deeper conversation, not just about grades. You know, I always liken it to, young person goes through an AP course and they make an A all year long, and then they get to the AP exam and they make a 2. That's a conversation about how well our instruction is, is our tier-one instruction, doing what needs to, is our professional learning, doing what is, how's our AP Institute? What does that look like? Do we have good collaboration? Do we have the right tools? Those are all the additional conversations. So to your point, from a governance standpoint, we're going to work with your KPIs that you have on the board goals, and we're going to make sure that your dashboards help reflect that. But also for your team, they're going to be able to get to the student level. Their goal is to be able to really know who those young people are and whether or not they're serving them, because each day your boots on the ground are making decisions in that real time, and we need to make sure that we're keeping up with them as fast as possible. So we download from your student information system nightly. Every night that's being updated. Every time they take an assessment, the team is able to, as soon as they get the scores, they're able to upload it into our system. This first part is the hardest part, it takes us the longest to build it because we build the templates custom to Brian ISD. It's what your indicator is, what your local program code, there is no other system that will look like your system. While we do have some templates, for the most part, your system is yours. The templates that we build on your assessments, we take the most recent master template, so SAT, PSAT, NWA map. We use the most recent templates, we upload those, and then we also put historical data. So we'll have a four-year trend data for everything that we, if we have four years of data on it, we build you the trend. The best part is, is we're building that trend right now so you don't just see this year's data, you'll see four years, and then from there on, it will still catalog. It won't drop off a year, it will keep each year subsequent as you stay with us. Seth?
I love that.
And I think one thing, one thing you mentioned that I'm just going to throw out there, because I'm not sure if I've told the whole board this, but these are our KPIs, obviously, that we've built for this year. I also think it's okay to start thinking about what are the board goals next year? Does this impact those board goals? And is there maybe some board goals that we haven't looked at because we couldn't get to the data-
Sure.
-in a meaningful way? And so, you know, we have these KPIs today, but I also want to keep us looking forward to what, how can we change, you know, even some of the major goals?
Absolutely. You may find that you see your greater community through this data, not just an individual student or a subset or a demographic of student. You may see the Brian community through this data in a different way that totally shifts how you work through your KPIs, how you support professional learning for your teachers, how you, you know, when you're making that board approval for an expenditure, how does that support the teaching and learning in this district and does it support the greater community? And that's our goal, is to help you get those insights. We don't answer the questions, we usually just help you find the places where you get to start asking the good questions. And so that's where we try to come in and say, "Here's where we're at," and then my role as an advisor is to coach and to help as we go through this process and also bring in the best practices and research that are out there. But I will tell you, you have a very talented team, and when they see that data, they are already going, "Oh, I waited to see this so quickly." And they don't have to wait on the Cognos report, they don't have to wait on some of those other things that, like I said, in assist, it's not really designed to do that.
So tell me about, what will it show or how, what will we use to see about the closing the gap? We're always trying to figure out about closing the gap, is the gap open, is it closed? And I think sometimes we're kind of concerned on, are we closing it on here with this group of students? But then it opens up wider over here.
Sure.
So will we be able to see something?
You will. We definitely put all of your assessments through that and put them through the paces. There are a lot of comparatives there. We don't use it as a predictive, but as a comparative. And one of the things I'd like to say is, oftentimes it's not an achievement gap, it's an opportunity gap. And so when we look at it, is are there opportunities that are being missed for these young people? Are there places that we change our policies, we change how we work with these young people? Is there a place where we can be more effective and really hone in on those opportunities? If there's a particular policy that we have that's removing students from campuses or classrooms or whatever it may be, that could be causing an opportunity gap, not the achievement gap. And so we'll let you see those different pieces to have them. We do immediately all of your assessment data, we put a lot of those gaps in so that you can see it through the lens of students of poverty, students who receive special education services, emerging bilingual, all of those different indicators. You know, our young people, a lot of times we want to put labels on them, we try to work you out of the label and say, "Student first, this student receives these additional wraparound services, are those services helping this young child? Is this effective?" That's where we get to that question.
When you say "we," who all is looking at that and evaluating that?
So your team here, all of your administrators, you get unlimited lessons, every one of your campus principals will be able to have it, and as they deem, as this admin team deems to roll this out, as many people need to see it. The best part is, is we also are working, we're SBA 20 compliant, we'll be, we'll be very protective of student data because there is very secure student data, and so we want to make sure that, like, we're COSSIN compliant as well. And so we use a thing called roles, management, and permissions, and within that, there will be various people who can see certain data sets. It is not a free-for-all, open to everybody. A campus principal will see something different than a campus counselor would see. And depending on how you, as a team, once again, it's a Brian ISD system, decide, this is who, we'll see what. And then, one of the things I'd like to say is, if I'm a group of assistant principals sitting at the high school, and I'm in a PLC, and we're talking about truancy, I should be able to go right to a dashboard and grab the information that I like, I wonder, I think, oh, I wonder about this. I should be able to grab that information so that I can be data-informed today to start a process to move forward tomorrow.
We like that. But, you know, we're a product of our most recent experience. Today I was at Prairie View A&amp;M and our lunch conversation centered around students who are not prepared, not college-ready, particularly in math. And our conversation went right to, a bunch of teacher educators around the table, "Well, if they don't have algebra when they're in eighth grade," you know, it was that, they just can't get far enough. And then thinking through, what are all the math options and are students taking advantage of them? You know, it's not just calculus, they have other options, but I think this will help us identify, like, where are those opportunity gaps you mentioned?
Onramps and offramps. You know, if your young people do not get an advanced math at sixth grade, are they on the trajectory for Algebra I in the eighth grade? And then how does that get them to calculus? But more importantly, in Texas, are they going to be TSI met? TSI met means that they had to have had at least some type of Algebra II or some type of instruction change in geometry around probability, because it's heavy probability in that TSI math. And those problem-solving skills, that goes all the way back down. So when you're looking at your system and your academic planning guide and how we're advising your fifth-grade student to that sixth-grade math, to Algebra I, those conversations have become a linear conversation for sure. And that's that opportunity gap and the on-ramp, off-ramp, especially if you have high mobility. If you have students coming in and out of your systems, then what do we know about that young person? And do we have to accelerate them quicker to get them college and career-ready?
So how does it look if a student comes in from another area? So if we're looking at student data and they come in from one of our smaller school districts in Texas that doesn't have this data set and they don't have this system?
They don't have to. So one of the things that your team actually have, we have a file that's an enrollment file, so they will be able to see students that are new and mobile when they come in. They'll also be able to see if they have been in the U.S. the entire time, they'll be able to see, you know, when their first entry date into U.S. schools were and things of that nature.
Okay.
So there's certain aspects that go into your student information system because we report that already. And so we'll extrapolate that out, and then your team, because that is top of mind, they're going to go, "Okay, I want this as a filter, I want to look and see how many of my sixth graders who are now, you know, sixth graders, how are they leveling up that are new to our district?" Once again, it's going from that big data then down to, here's a small subset of students that we may need to put a different intervention into, that RTI model.
Who's on our, who's on our team? This question is for Barbara, but-
She's your team leader, by the way.
Yes. I'm looking for, okay, third grade going into fourth grade, well, I was trying to think of a situation where they really wouldn't know the student that much, maybe fourth going into fifth. Are the fifth-grade, like, we used to go over, especially when it was any type of special ed situation, we would go over and be in the eighth grader's ard coming into ninth grade, which helped a lot. So we'd go over there and be in their ar, spring ard. And then by the time they came to us, somebody knew them, plus we could talk to the teachers about them. So how will the teacher, the receiving teacher fit into this? Because they've got so much information now. I'm a fifth-grade teacher, what is my responsibility for each student I'm fixing to have next year, now that I have all this available to me? Are they going to, are they, I mean, like-
They actually have access to all student-level data, so in the systems we currently have, for example, in Aware with EdGeForia, they can see the historical assessment data for the students that are in their class already. They can already see if there's been an RTI process and gauge for that student in branching minds, the district system for documenting the RTI process, they can see all of that as well. So they pick up right where the student left off, whether they're moving from one campus to another or rising within the system, they have that.
Won't they have more, won't they have act, like, attendance, act, more of the whole child than just measurement data?
You mean through the Five Labs system? I think that's something we need to talk about, and if this is a teacher-level tool or if this is an administrator-level tool, and to what extent would it be beneficial at the teacher level or for a team of teachers, and what kind of views would they have? Going back to, Dr. Braswell was mentioning, you know, what are the different roles, rights, and permissions for each role in the organization so that they see the data that's appropriate to the work that they do? So it's not the lag data that Mr. McCloskey was mentioning?
Right. So if I'm a fifth-grade teacher and I knew that this child missed 25 days in fourth grade or, and had the information, by the time they missed my class two or three times, I'd be on top of it. And some, I mean, you know, calling, finding out, is mom sick, is there another baby in the fam, whatever the deal is. I mean, I'm just, maybe I'm thinking too much, but I just think of all the teachers can do now with all of this at their disposal will touch.
There's some interesting reporting mechanisms within Five Labs and some different builds that we're, that we're looking at with Dr. Braswell, that include student profile kind of sheets, giving you some data about the student and could even be historic in that nature. And there's also some indicator-type systems based on the parameters that we put in place in terms of tiering the students, in terms of the supports they need based on historical data sets. And so it might be they're the recipients of those types of screens, views, or reports. It'd probably be more important for them to be in the instructional data set and then working with counselor teams and administrator teams to see those profiles and working with the teacher teams about what the students need.
But that's where it gets lost. I mean, you- I mean, you, you know, you understand, those counselors have gazillion of kids, and the teacher has just the ones that are responsible for it. And that's where that disconnect happens, is when the, I just, I mean, I don't, I don't want sensitive information that we shouldn't be giving to teachers. But I think if we want that kind of relationship with teachers, we need to give them as much as we can for them to start those new relationships that we've been missing for two years.
Lynn, can you, can you tell us, is there a district out there that's found the, the perfect model, customized for them, of course, where they're doing what Ruthie's describing, where the teacher has a certain user role with limited access, of course, all the way to a super-user, like Dr. Ibarra, would have access to everything? Because, of course, what we know will happen is if they're sitting in a PLC and there's a district-level support, or a principal has a faculty meeting, they'll have that higher-level usage. And then, they will flash onto the screen trends specific to their campus, trends across the district. Because we know that data will inform decisions we need to make for intervention or enrichment and all that. But, but can you tell us a day in the life of a teacher and what, what that would look like?
From two different pers- perspectives. One would be, I do have some teachers that have certain level sets of data cubes that they would see. They are looking at, like, student participation and activities. They are looking at chronic absenteeism. It doesn't get so granular as their period attendance and stuff like that. But they're seeing, okay, this student is falling below the 90%. They've, they've made thresholds and said, hey, red flag, red flag, it's a threshold here. We just need to look at this. Because as a teacher, if I'm having to go and, and count and do, you know, all that kind of stuff, we just, here's some early warning. So, I do have one district that is very teacher-focused, all the way up to the, to the top levels, that is like, I want to see everything. And they have probably 10 different roles within their organization. Counselors, SSFs, principals, APs, the views are very different. Then, we have another district that they have a lot of teacher-committee work. And so, those teacher-committee work is really about that culture, climate, and really getting to that RTI model. And so, they have teachers that are on these specialized committees and PLC leads that are pulling in just different pieces of data to actually have those PLC conversations. So then, when they are sitting there going, hey, we've noticed not just student achievement, but we've also seen by department, we have a, a, an issue with our attendance here. We're not seeing achievement here. Also, have you noticed our increase in discipline? Whatever it may be. And they're having them also equity conversations. I, I have the same district that has a equity team in their PLCs. So, they're looking at how many students receive special education services or in advanced placement courses. Or they're looking at their students by race and their entry level into honors courses, et cetera. And having those deeper conversations in the PLC and making sure that it's not something happening at the organizational level that's preventing students from getting those opportunities. So, that's kind of the two different areas that I've seen it. 99% of the time, big view, it's, it is very much administrative tool because it does drill down. But because of our user roles, permissions, and data cube access, we are able to help your team say, this is what you get to see. This is what's available. When we say sensitive data, it is literally, it's the inside of your SIS. It's everything that that young person is going through. And when you put that historical data in, I do, I do coach people away from using historical discipline data at the student level. Because what we see is the label placed up. You know, it, it's kind of like when I was there, they were like, oh, there she is. I knew, I had, I'm the last of six. They knew all of my family. So, when I came through, I got, I was Chad's little sister. So, I didn't want to be Chad's little sister in class. So, we, we try to stop that from happening.
That's Warren's issue whenever he comes in.
So, Barbara?
He's already been labeled.
Let me ask you a crazy question, Barbara. We got so many teams. So, who's on your team? I'm just curious.
So, the, the team continues to grow. But right now, it's Julie Johnson. It's obviously for the, the technology side of it. Jennifer Lemmons for the Student Information System. Mike Coleman, who's the Senior Systems Analyst, same thing. I think Mike and Lynn are best friends now.
Y'all should, you should get, I'm just gonna say it publicly, you, you keep him, he's fantastic. I work with a lot of people like that. He does very great work. I'm gonna say it publicly. He does great work.
Thank you for that. Then, we also have Dr. Jill Morris, Sarah Chupp, who's the Assistant Director of Analyst of Area. And then, that's the core team for just the setup. But in terms of what the views look like, that's a much larger group. And that's gonna be fluctuating based on the topic. So, like Dr. Braswell was just mentioning, perhaps it is an AP-type group and dashboard that we're building. Well, we're gonna bring APs in. What do you need it to be? And so, those teams fluctuate in terms of the design build based on who the user is and where we can empower them to act on the analytics versus having to go dig them up. And so, the, the core team in terms of setup and getting it rolling out is the group that I just mentioned. But then, it fluctuates considerably after that.
I would say one of the most valuable parts of our tool as well is that we actually give you the tools that we use to build. So, the visuals that you see and the analytics and the boards that I've already built, your team, that, that group that she was just talking about, I've already spent an hour with them, teaching them how to build their own data views, to start learning that. And they get unlimited time with me to learn how to build in the system and to make it as robust as they want. So, when they say, I need a dashboard, I want to do this, I want to try, go for it. And they have access to build those dashboards themselves, based on the responsive needs, and they're not waiting on me.
Until we learn how to do it the right way.
We're, we're coaching that. We're coaching that.
I, I need more coaching than most.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a bit.
So, by the time it gets to us, Barbara, we don't have to build anything. Thank God. Y'all do that.
And we can't break it.
Yeah.
That's right.
We can't break it, can we?
No.
No, not at all.
So, by the time it gets to us, everything will be set up.
It'll be set up, but really, going back to kind of what y'all have been talking about, what are the questions you want to know about? What are the questions and answers that you have about data in the district? Because that'll drive what dashboards are built to be responsive to that inquiry.
Do you want to get a snack before we get started? Or you just want us to get started?
I, I, I think as we start diving down into the student data, we can go back into closed session. But I, I want to bring finance in for a second, uh, with, with, and, and student data. But I, I think another main thing that we saw...
Kevin's looking like, what?
Kevin's looking like, really?
But, um, comparable districts. And, and I, I know that was on display at, at various, um, at... Conference, I guess, Tasby Conference, uh, Tasby Tessa. Can you talk about kind of those comparable districts and how we, and, and I know Barbara knows well how we've done it in the past and...
Sure. And actually, we were in Five Site earlier today, looking at peer groups and what needed to be, you know, tweaked a little bit on the peer groups to be more intuitive. So, we take every bit of the public data on the finance side. And when I say every bit, I mean every last line of data that comes from the public side. And when we put the financials in, we're able to build you some comparatives. So, you might look at student FTEs versus teacher FTEs, which are teacher-to-student ratio, and compare it with 12 other districts. You may be, over years, however many years. You may be able to look at, what is the percentage of your teachers that have zero to three years of experience at a campus? And what percentage of them are? And what's the percentage of students who are of poverty at that same campus? You'll be able to see those in those data sets. You'll be able to see where you've spent money in 199, 244. You'll be able to look at, okay, sorry, I start talking finance. So, your local funding, your federal funding, your program intent, so...
You should have seen Kevin's like.
Yes, yes. So, those types...
199, what?
What? Yes. So, those types of things, you'll be able to see those different things over time, some of those trend analysis. We like to create the stories around your state of the district. So, the state of the district is really, it's one of our favorite reports. And it just gives you a good 10,000-foot view of where you're at, where you've been, where you're going. Now, that is on the Five Site comparatives, and that's what you're really talking about on all those comparative pieces. There is another product, Five Cast, and I'm assuming you have Five Cast. But, and so, he works with Travis on that. Five Cast is not my specialty. So, Travis Xander, who's amazing, he's the former Budget Director at Austin ISD, who works on our team. He's great. But he, that's the budget projection piece, where we look at maintenance of equity. And we're trying to make sure that we're keeping you on pace. We know in the shifting times that you have limited funds and a lot of need. And so, helping you see what's your current state of the district now, and then how are you gonna work through that going forward? The other piece, too, is that ROI conversation. I like to be able to audit certain things. We were talking today, using Five Lab to audit your master schedules. Look at instructor counts, course counts, seat counts. What are we doing in our day-to-day, in our operations? And is there a place that we can actually be a little bit tighter, hold a little closer, so that we're not putting as many expenditures forward?
Can, it can do master schedule on campuses?
It, you'll be able to analyze it and see it and audit it. We don't, we don't, we don't lay it out like a card next. You would want to use Card next for that. It's a great program you're already using. We don't, we don't run it. We do the audit of it. So then, you can see, okay, yes, it ran at 97%, but in that 97%, is there disparities? Or could we have shaved a little bit more here or there? So, we're using our FTEs at a better rate. Maybe not too many, you know, extra periods here or that. Looking at some of those different pieces, just being really intentional with our master schedule.
Is that the master, is that the program we use for master schedules?
Yeah. That's what we bought.
No more big boards with magnets?
Those days are gone.
Office supply companies love this.
Analytics come with it more than just a magnet, so it's super fun.
Well, can I throw in a couple of things? I don't know that this is, this isn't gonna be anywhere close to earth-shaking. But just what I've kind of gleaned from all this is, a couple of things I've heard is that one of the things that, that I see is we, we, we're gonna have a hard time, I guess, saying, okay, we're gonna absolutely analyze the needs of every single child independently. Be nice if we can do that, and maybe, maybe to some degree we can't. But there are certainly, certain kids that have certain needs, and there are other kids that are similar. And so, one of the things that, that I'm hearing is that we're gonna try to analyze what is working to bring those kids forward. And that's a big task, and you're gonna try to do everything you can to figure out what is working and what's not working. And then, and then, what I heard, I think these words used earlier, best practices. I've, I've always wanted so much to make sure, and I think we try to do that certainly, but I'm, I'm hoping this will help us get us there, that once we say, okay, this, these particular kids have these kinds of issues and these kind of needs, we really need to know what the best practices are for those kids. And, and I, like I said, I'm not saying anything earth-shaking. I think that's probably what you're trying to do. But that's what's so important, I think, for me, is that once we nail those, then we really need to make sure that until it fails us, we're going to use those. And our teachers aren't gonna just say, well, okay, I don't like that, I'm gonna do something else. We, we got to be able to not impose, but to strongly encourage that these best practices are actually used. Or I don't know that we've gained a whole lot, is my point.
I think one thing, Mr. Stasny, when we were working earlier this afternoon, it, it's along the lines of what you're, you're describing. The Board has approved NWEA's MAP assessment, the Growth Assessment, right? It's a new tool. It's a new set of data and information now to the student level. And there's, there's a learning curve with it, right? And there's a question of, okay, well, can I trust it if I'm a teacher, right? And so, showing that alignment of, this is the child's MAP data for beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. Here's their growth. Here's their corresponding STAR performance, SAT performance, ACT performance. And these things are tightly aligned. So, if you'll trust that the system is valid and what it's recommending is what the student's ready to learn next, you can have a great deal of trust in that because it's showing you with data on your kids that it's tightly aligned. And it, it is working towards that outcome. And that's, that's how you can have that trust. And so, it replicates trust within the systems we have so that they're implementing the best practices that are a part of those systems, as well as in-district efforts, that those things are mirrored. It gives us the evidence in a very visual way to tell the story and to sway the mindsets of, of where they are. I think that's, they, they, every teacher wants to do the absolute best they can for their kids. It's hard for them without the, the story, the visuals, the, the evidence for them to trust that a different approach or a different way might yield a, a larger impact positively on the student than the one they're currently utilizing. So, it's this type of tool that helps us move that mindset and open to new ideas, in my, in my opinion.
I, I, I think we're about to head back, and we can get into some of the bigger details. But, but I, I think one thing that I'm looking forward to having, having the data to move the progress, right? To, to empower the progress movement. As I said, I, I, I spent time this afternoon going back and looking at the last six years of just snapshot data, which really, as a board member, I, I think it's probably about as, the information that we need. It's not formed, I mean, you know, it's, it's a little bit more data. But, but looking back there, and there's a lot of values that just haven't changed. You know, they're, 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 they're the same pre-COVID, and of course, we get up to 2020. And, and there's, there's some that have made great strides and some that just have not changed at all. And, and it's fun, the ones that have made strides, because they're ones that we've talked about, right? It, it's, it's teacher and faculty salaries that we know were very low. We've seen a lot of strides in that. We, we've seen, you know, and it just becomes evidence in the data, and that, that's just one example. But we see graduation rates have, have gone up. You know, and, and that's great. But how, you know, but, but, but part of that is, is having that focus, I think, and having that attention that helps move, helps move that, that bar, not just from the board, but, you know, having that visibility into the, into the data.
And to quote you, I think, Lynn, it's, we've always been data-rich. We've always had all this data, but we've been information-poor, and so, this helps us. Because what was the term you used? It's educational malpractice.
Yes.
To know and not do anything.
Exactly.
Yep.
I remember.
Thank you. I was like, my teaching was good that day.
It was. I remember that from this summer.
That's...
Okay. As I'm getting my agenda back up, let's go ahead and go. The Board will now convene in closed session to discuss the following items, as allowed by Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Issues pertaining to, um, discuss issues pertaining to appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal, as well as deliberate matter regarding public school students in which personally identifiable information about the students will be revealed through the deliberations. So, it is now 6:52. The Board reconvened in open session at 8:06. No action was taken in closed session, and we are adjourned.